Okay. 6:00 PM, let's get the meeting started. Molly's not able to make it and Stacy is not able to make it. If Molly shows up later, that's fine. Okay, let's all stand for the Fledge of Allegiance. Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Everybody? Brenda, can you hear us okay? She's in. Okay, alright. First item up will be to approve the meeting agenda. Everything's up there. I'm going to take a motion to approve the meeting agenda. Motion by Greg. Second by Ann. Any discussion on the meeting agenda? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the meeting agenda signify by saying aye, but this will be a roll call since we're on Zoom. So Brenda?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Ann?
Aye.
Tenten carries. Opportunities for visitors who dress to board. Anybody dressed to board? Not hearing any, so let's move on. We have some acknowledgements here. Mr. Zane Viles and the Choir Trip Chaperones. Girls Basketball Academic Allstate, Kelly Isman and Kaya Nelson. Celebration of Cultures was Emily Thompson and her committee. Brian, anything you'd like to add there?
Yeah, thank you to the Chaperones and Mr. Vales for all their work and time and effort chaperoning the choir trip. Successful trip, good experiences, kids had fun. Allstate and girls basketball this year, they had to have a 3.8 or higher GPA, and that is cumulative, so that's a very good GPA. So Academic Allstate was Kelsey Isman and Kaya Nelson, so congratulations to Kelsey and Kaya. And Celebration of Cultures, thank Ms. Thompson and the committee for all their work to put on the Celebration of Cultures and have a great experience and fun time for the kids that attended.
Well, we'll move on to administrative reports. Mr. Nelson, you have something, Principal on 80.
Roman, 425. Want to thank Hamedah Pantoja for her work as parent at elementary. Hamedah got a job at a different place in town, so thank you for her work. We had some winners at the trying circus coloring contest, which was actually held today. So kindergarten, Gianna Murillo, first grade Bridget Pantoja, third grade Alyssa Field, sixth grade Shaly Franco, and then the grand champion of all the coloring contests for the whole area for DL was Derek Pantoja. So congratulations to them. They all received tickets to the circus, which is this evening, and other prizes, and I believe Derek has got a bike as well, so congratulations to them and our art department for their work in getting our students ready for a contest like this. Hire Nicole Herbenson as elementary teacher, she will go to second grade. Mr. Run will go to sixth grade, and a couple of our switches, so that'll be a good addition. MCA reading test started this week, we'll have math test next week, and science the week after. Today we had an instructional leadership team, and we just confirmed that next year we will be doing a deep dive into reading and writing. Those are two big areas, big umbrellas, so we may break off and look at one piece more than the other next year, and then following year tackle the other piece. So a lot of hot topics out there with the science of reading, so we'll have a lot of good discussion, and a lot of teachers have already been doing a lot of background investigating on their own. So tomorrow is elementary band concert at 6:30 over at the auditorium, so thank you to Ms. Mo, and she'll be having her students ready. May 1st is a fourth grade instrument band night where they can come in and kind of look at instruments and figure out what instrument they'd like to play, so another exciting time for our fourth graders. And then May 19th is May through three field day. May 22nd is four through six field day, and there are lots of field trips that are starting to come in for the last couple of weeks in May, so nice that kids can go on a field trip again and get out where several years we weren't able to, so having fun for them. Lou, thank you for the article in the paper. We have had quite a few nominations come in for the Hall of Fame, so thank you for that, the word's gotten out, and I mean, your article, everybody quotes your article and said, "I can't find it, so I'm getting ahold of you," and I'm like, "Perfect, give me the information," so that's been great. And then thank you to Joy Miller for coaching soccer here the last couple of years, and good luck to her and her new job coming up next year. So, any questions? Thank you.
Okay, I'll start with enrollments. We are up seven this month from 408 to 415. Just like the elementary, we are in the heart of MCA testing, so I do want to thank Mrs. Cork for all of her time, effort, and organization for organizing the district assessments. It's a lot of work. Reading MCAs are last week for grades seven, eight, and 10. Math MCAs are this week for grades seven, eight, and 11, and then we'll finish next week with science MCAs for grades eight and 10. Our building leadership team met this past week, and we are kind of doing a review of just what has happened this year, and one of our big topics was PLCs and its effectiveness. This year we implemented SALE lessons, which stands for Student Achievement Innovative Learning, and so we really just kind of talked about that and thought about, do we need to change some things, continue things? And we did do a teacher survey, and for the most part, people feel like it's really helpful for teacher development. It's a great time to learn from others and troubleshoot lessons and student needs. Peer observations we also do, teachers also have felt like this is helpful for their development. So next year, our focus will be to continue, possibly reformat the SALE lessons, and then also include peer observations and possibly look at a speaker or a book study to hone in on those SALE lessons next year. Celebrations of cultures, I want to thank Mrs. Thompson for all the work she puts into creating a wonderful event for our students. It continues to grow each year, and it's a great opportunity for kids to learn more about each other and their cultures. As Mr. Nelson mentioned, thank you to Mrs. Miller. She's been a great asset for our ELL program and students. She has a great ability to connect with students, make them feel welcome, and support their academic and social needs, so she will be missed, but I am excited for her to teach elementary next year in Bricks Falls. We also have recognition of one of our high school special education teachers. You'll also notice that I have a staff subjective wellbeing questionnaire results that I listed here. In our educator wellbeing courses that we've gone through this year as an admin team, this was one of the suggestions to try, so it was a really simple eight-question survey that I sent to certified staff and also non-certified staff, and you'll see the results there from those eight different questions asked. Do you feel like you belong at this school? And all of these were, they could answer a one, two, or three, with one being almost never, three being almost always, and you'll notice that we had really good feedback and results where people feel like, in all these eight questions, almost always was the majority of the answer for staff. So just a good little quick feedback for me as a principal. Build learning, build trust, build success. Mrs. King's class toured KLN and Long Weekend Apparel in Purim. I believe Mr. Marsh and her are also taking students next week to Arvig. Are you going to the facility? Arvig and, oh gosh, did I know another spot? In Purim, so a really great opportunity though for kids just to explore kind of what's out there. Mr. Larson's welding class, I got to observe them. They're kind of at the end of the year where they get to now plan, design, and fabricate some final projects, so it's fun to watch what they come up with. Students had a fun little battle for top honors and match varnish bracket challenge that Mr. Brugeman put on. Team seven from the staff took the victory in our Staff Wellness Week Challenge. Teachers and students worked through April snow showers and e-learning days to welcome spring. We had our last two CNA students pass their skills exam, so it's an exciting time for Mrs. Linus and her students. I want to wish our FFA students good luck this weekend at State. And then you'll notice our upcoming events Friday is already mid-quarter for quarter four, and then next week we will have a mock crash for grades nine through 12 that SAD is sponsoring, and then Senior Prom. Is that following me? And then I also wanted to touch on the mentorship program.
Did you provide me a link to that?
Yeah, then I just wanted to touch on, we go through, it's three days for new teachers. A three-day teacher workshop on Tuesday, they get some time to work in their rooms, and then we do some district training. We took the mentees and the mentors out to Escobar that first day just to have a nice lunch and introduce them to Pelican Rapids, especially for teachers that are new to the community. And then we go through a mentor-mentee training also on that first day, and then give those teachers time to work together. On the second day, teachers get time to work in their room, have lunch, meet with their building administration, and then work in their rooms. And then on Thursday, we have Mr. Brugeman introduce the seven habits to those new teachers. Again, take them out to lunch at Money Moose just to further explore the community. Mr. Cork has the mentorship program up here that we give to the mentors and the mentees. So on that first day of our new teacher workshop, we go over this with teachers, mentors, and mentees, and we have three different levels, if you go all the way up to the top there. There's three different levels. Full mentorship would be for new teachers that are new to the profession. They go to that training, have fall in-service with their mentees, and then they have check-ins every week, every so often, and then we have a formal monthly meeting that they have each month with their mentors and mentees, and we have checkmarks or a checklist that they go through each month with different subject areas. In October, we talk about parent-teacher conferences, what to look for. One of the months we talk about how to post grades, some, just kind of building nuts and bolts of how things work with that.
I think the big thing with that too is a teacher always feels not bad going in and asking their mentor questions, they don't feel like they're bugging someone because they know, hey, if I have questions, go to this person, they'll help me answer any questions that I have. So sometimes new employees feel like, well, I don't want to bug that person, but they know that, hey, this is the person you go to if you have certain questions, and I think they get to be comfortable in that role. Ms. Isman, would you agree?
Yeah, I was a mentor last year for a new fourth grade teacher, and I think just, we hadn't had that when I came. I've heard so many people say that it's just been so helpful, and I think it's good for the mentee too, even to go through the checklists, like, oh yeah, you know, probably shouldn't sure, you know? So I think it's, and it just builds a good relationship, so I think it's been really good. I've heard really good positive things.
And there's some observations, they go and observe them, teach, and give them some, you know, informal feedback, which is good as well, so.
I think there could be some, in the future, tweaking between elementary. It's pretty universal, so I think you could, you know, tweak a little bit between the buildings, but it's a great, it's been a great addition, in my opinion.
Just a nice first person for them to feel like they have that person to go to when they first come in, so it's been good. Any questions on my report or mentorship?
Any questions? Alright, thank you. Mrs. Pesch, you have something for us?
Yeah. Recently, the Pelican Rapids Wind Ensemble competed in large group contests held at Barnesville. After performing our piece, we received a critique from the judges and then ended up earning a triple superior rating, which is the highest possible rating, so that was a fun experience. And then last week, a group of juniors and seniors from PRHS business classes had the opportunity to go to Purim and then tour Kenny's Candy and Long Weekend Sportswear, and we learned about a bunch of careers in the world of manufacturing, including robotics, business, and marketing.
Are the candies smell? Does it smell good?
It smells good.
Licoricey?
It's Charlie's Chocolate Factory, and it's got a little bit surreal.
Sylvia, what did you call the award that you got thrown something? Was it triples?
Yeah.
That's like the opposite.
So we got a superior rating from all of our, from all the judges.
From all the judges, okay.
Any questions?
That's a really neat thing to be able to go to those places. I've caught videos here and there of, just, I don't know who posts those, but I think one was up at Leech Shirts maybe. It's very nice, great job.
It's down to the real world. It's not just reading about careers and I love.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez, finance. Yes. Alright.
Alright, right in front of you guys, we have the report for the end of March. We started our investment account with $5.5 million and ended with $5.6 million. Pretty good cash flow coming into our investments from the Department of Minnesota, which is really good. In terms of cash flow, pretty standard month. We started, as you can see there at the bottom, from all the funds, a cash on hand of $1,000, and then we ended with cash on hand of negative 84. As I mentioned before, we have it automatic set that, we have a zero balance account that as soon as it triggers negative, we close from our investment account, so there is no, we always meet our obligations even though in the report on paper looks like it's in the negative. Big things coming up for the finance office, actually before I jump there, we'll go to page number two, which is practically just all the different journal entries. You're going to start to see a significant level of journal entries coming up as we start to clean up the books and start preparing already for audit. Seems like we finished the audit just a couple of months ago, but we're already prepping for the end of this year, so we're going to start to see a lot of journal entry edits. Some of the things that we have here today is just making sure the books balance at the end of the year, and just miscoding and a couple of things that we had to do to make sure that all the monies were going to the correct account to make sure that the choir trip, choir trip happened. Then, the last pages, pages three through eight is all of our payables that went through the month of March. And again, if you guys ever need any supporting documentation for all of our expenses, please feel free to reach out to me, I'll be happy to provide them. Big things coming up for the finance office, we have levy reconciliation coming up pretty soon. In the month of April, we receive the last half of our levy for fiscal year '23. Finishing up budget, budget planning, so hopefully by the May board meeting, we'll be able to bring together a proposed budget for fiscal year '24. Additionally, this, this particular board meeting, you guys are going to see that we have a letter of support for the city of Pelican Rapids in reference to the pool as the city is starting to issue an abatement bond. Now, this particular letter leaves a little bit different in the sense that we are actually passing a motion to decline to participate in the abatement bond, and the reason for that is that the city has a smaller tax, tax pool than the school district does, so one of the financing tools that they're trying to do is they're trying to expand the length of the bond from 15 years to 20 years to lessen the impact of tax increases to the constituents of Pelican Rapids. But in order to do so, they need a letter from us, the letter that's right on the screen, practically again, supporting to decline to participate in the abatement bond, so they have the option to go for a longer term. Sounds a little bit like a double negative, but we want to support to decline.
So on the agenda, it says approve the tax payment for community pool project, so we don't want it, recommend don't act on it.
Correct.
So we would not approve it.
Correct, yep. Took us a little bit, a little bit of time to decipher it, but, so, so when we get to that, simply say we will not participate.
Alright, thanks. Mr. Cork. What do you got for us?
Hey, e-learning days, we used all of them, so we're all out of e-learning days. The state allows five e-learning days a school year, so we've used them all up, and we used all three built-in snow days, so if we do have a day that, if more snow comes and we don't have school, can't be any e-learning, so we'll have to look at the calendar to see when we would make up that date. Hopefully that doesn't happen. Next year, it's giving free breakfast and free lunch for students K through 12, and that will be for breakfast and lunch. Now, we will be expected to collect educational benefit forms, that's the forms that see if the families qualify for free or reduced breakfast and lunch, so it might be a little bit more of a challenge to collect them, just knowing their families, but we're going to encourage families to do all we can to collect those forms. Summer planning, we're starting the summer planning, administrative teams have been very busy working on from summer activities, summer rec, to academic programming in the summer, to flyers, putting information out there so people know when things are going to be offered and how to sign up, so that should be going out. Mrs. Wancher's been working on that. Next year's school year planning, we've been working on workshop for teachers and support staff, so we're busy putting our whole workshop schedule together, hopefully going to have that all completed here by the end of the school year, so going into June, that should be all set. Items for on the agenda, just to, a couple of things here that you're going to act on tonight that we recommend that you approve. One is that the teachers' union has given us a letter for their desire to negotiate, so we want to move forward with that. Next item is approving the Education, Identity, and Access Management Board Resolution. That is a yearly approval, that's for the superintendent to go in and give approvals for a number of different staff or outside organizations to go in there and access different items to work with the programs that we offer. Mr. Martinez talked about the tax abatement. The policies tonight are recommended by the policy committee to approve. There's C under business items, that's a first and second reading for those policies, and then under D, that's just for the first reading. So if you approve the first reading, then we'll do the second reading at the next board meeting. So just a reminder again, they are all MSBA recommendations. Policy committee has gone through them and have recommended to you to approve and move forward, but, so. Graduation is May 26. If you can look at your calendar, let us know by the middle of May. Let myself know if you will be in attendance or if you will not be in attendance, so then we can know who's going to represent the board to talk and how many chairs we need, so. And again, that's May 26 at 7:00 PM. And just a reminder, June 21st, regular meeting. Reminder, the start time is 7:00 AM, this is for the June, and then in June, we determine the next year's dates and times, but for June, we have a 7:00 AM start. Looking ahead, just dates for regular meetings, graduation, and then we will sometime in May or June have a finance committee meeting again. We'll email the finance committee to see what dates work, and maybe closer to that time to meet.
Well, do we want to wait till after the legislature finishes with?
We may need some things just for planning purposes to meet before that, so we might have to meet twice, or we can always meet and then when we start to negotiate, talk about that too. Meet breaker for negotiations starts. That's all I have.
Any questions?
With the ones that we'll have to collect for the free meals, still doing the incentive for activity tickets?
That's what we did last year, so we would have to approve that again if we want to do that again, if that happens. Or if there's other ideas. It's going to be a big challenge.
Has it been, been sort of that?
We had a good improvement this past year. We, our office staff did a great job of contacting families and collecting forms, and we had one from elementary representative, one from high school, they did a great job of keeping track and contacting families and collecting them all, so we had a good percentage share. And we appreciate the families completing that.
Absolutely.
Hey, any questions? Any questions, Brenda? Alright, we're going to move on. Consent items. Item A, approve board meeting minutes, March 20th, 2023, regular meeting, financial claims, market bills. Treasurers report. Item B, accept donations. We have student accounts, $80 for our clemic. Viking Boutique, $80 for our clemic. L Siegle scholarship fund in memory of Joel Miller, $25, class of 1972. L Siegle scholarship fund, $500, Pay Siegle. Viking Boutique, $100, Lee and Justin Studsrud. And PRHS scholarship fund in memory of John McGregor, $30, Alan Sandrude, Grothie. Item B of personnel, approve the resignation of Jamina.
Hamedah.
Hamedah Pantoja, special education paraprofessional at Viking Elementary. Approve resignation of Joy Miller, ELL, paraprofessional at high school and assistant girls soccer coach. Approve resignation of a 1.0 FTE, special education teacher. And approve the hire of Nicole Herbenson as 1.0 FTE elementary teacher. Item F, last one, acknowledge receipt of the notice of desire to negotiate from the Pelican Rapids Education Association. So I'll entertain a motion for the consent. Motion by Greg?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brenda. Any discussion, anything in there? Hearing no discussion, this will be roll call again. All those in favor of approving the consent items signify by saying aye. Brenda?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Ann?
Aye.
Consent carries. So under the business items, approve the Education, Identity, and Access Management Board Resolution.
How much mention do you approve the Education, Identity, and Access Management Board Resolution?
Motion by Ann. Seconded by Greg. Any discussion on it? Brian, you explained it before. So I am going to just briefly read it. Educational, Identity, and Access Management Board Resolution. And it's the designation of an identified official with authority to education, identity, and access management, and the name's Brian Cork, superintendent. So this is a resolution. So audio resolve, Brenda?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Yes, Ann?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Item B, approve the tax abatement for the community pool project. Item B, approve the tax abatement for the community pool project. What's the way we should have this ordered?
So, you won't act on anyone that wants to do a motion and a second.
You even not even do that. Okay. Die for lack of a motion?
Yep.
Okay.
So, in order for the city to collect the abatement levy for more than 15 years, that's what we want, right?
That is exactly what we want, yes.
The city must receive a resolution from either Otterdale County or the school board declining to participate in abating their portion of the taxes. So.
Just a quick correction, Mr. Larson. We did contact city clerk and city administrator, and they told us that by the time they issued the letter and they got to the school district to actually learn from their financial advisor that a resolution is not needed.
So, we don't do, there's no action to specifically decline the school district's willingness to participate in abating their portion of the taxes?
Correct, yeah. If you guys just don't act on it, it'll show as, as, as a decline.
By default, just. Thank you. You may need a letter from us to say that.
Can we make a motion to decline participation and then approve that?
You can do that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So, I can make a motion to decline participation in the tax abatement community pool project? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Greg.
You know, in Rudy, please, I, you know, when I read this letter, aren't they requesting not a motion, but a resolution declining participation?
Correct.
So, don't we want a resolve to that effect?
We, we contacted them just to get clarity on that, and we were told that their financial advisor told them that a resolution was not needed.
Okay. I know you mentioned that, but thanks for hearing me out on that again, but.
No, we, we read it multiple times as well.
Yeah, it's interesting. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of declining the tax, or particip- Yeah, declining the participation of the tax abatement for the community pool project, signify by saying aye. This will be roll call again. So, Brenda?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Aye. Anne?
Aye.
It's been declined. So, for item C, can we make a motion just to list all of them in one motion? Or can we, you have to do each one?
You can do all of them.
All of them? Okay. Does anybody want to grab off a really long motion?
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the first and second reading of the following policies. 301, School District Administration. 302, Superintendent. 303, Superintendent Selection. 304, Superintendent Contract Duties and Evaluation. 305, Policy Implementation. 401, Equal Employment Opportunity. 402, Disability Non-Discrimination Policy. 403, Discipline Suspension and Dismissal of School District Employees. 404, Employment Background Checks. 408, Suffocation of the School District Employee. 410, Family and Medical Lead Policy. 419, Tobacco-Free Environment, Possession and Use of Tobacco, Tobacco-related Devices and Electronic Delivery Devices, Vaping Awareness and Prevention Instruction. 420, Students and Employees with Sexually Transmitted Infections and Diseases and Certain Other Communicable Diseases and Infectious Conditions. 423, Employee-Student Relationships. 427, Workload Limits for Certain Special Education Teachers.
Okay, we have a motion by Anne. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Greg. Greg kind of beat you up, but save it for next time. Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the policies? Second read. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion put forward by Anne signify by saying aye. This will be roll call. So, Brenda?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Aye. Anne?
Aye.
Carries. Now, we have another one. Item D. Approve the first reading of the following policies. I could make this motion here. Approve the first, I make a motion to approve the first reading of the following policies. 406, Public and Private Personnel Data. 413, Harassment and Violence. 414, Mandated Reporting of Child Neglect or Physical or Sexual Abuse. 415, Mandated Reporting of Maltreatment of Vulnerable Adults. 416, Drug and Alcohol Testing. 417, Chemical Use and Abuse. 418, Drug-Free Workplace and Drug-Free School. So, I made a motion. Do we have a second? Brenda?
I second.
Okay, all right. Give me a first shot. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on those? All those in favor of approving the first reading of the policies just listed signify by saying aye. It'll be roll call. Brenda?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Aye. Anne?
Aye.
Carries. So, that's the end of our business items. So, we have upcoming meetings. We have May 17. We have a regular meeting. June 21, a regular meeting that starts at 7:00 AM. So, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Greg? Seconded by Anne. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of adjourned signify by saying aye. It's a real call. Brenda?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Aye. Anne?
Aye.
Adjourn. Thanks, everybody.